City of Monroe Falls, regular council meeting Tuesday, June 16th, 2015 at 7:01 PM. Could all rise, we'll have Councilman Mike Barnes and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice in all.
Roll call person?
Steve Stoll.
Here.
John Hagnower.
Here.
Mike Barnes.
Here.
Jim Iyona.
Here.
Gary Toad.
Here.
Sam Dusick.
Here.
Brian Steinmerl.
Here.
Okay, approval minutes for our regular council meeting held Tuesday, June 2nd, 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All good? Roll call person?
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Mr. Iyona?
Yes.
Mr. Dusick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagnower?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Toad?
Yes.
Mr. Steinmerl?
Yes.
Moving on, reports of officials, Mayor's report to Mayor Larson.
Okay, thank you. The, since the committee meetings last week, it's been pretty much business as usual. The biggest thing is the rain that we've been having lately. I was, I've been out checking, and I did not see any, any problems. The, we've talked about the street carrying a lot of water on Lindsay and Vermont and in Hywood, where the street was paved over with cement. But in any of the cases, the gutters, the ditches on Lindsay and Vermont were running. They were not overflowing. Hywood was not overflowing. It, the creek, the creek behind Cathy Drive, between Hywood and Cathy Drive is flowing good. And south side of town, same thing. Drainage is working as it should, as it does in most of the stores. The, other than that, I just heard some questions. That ends my report.
Questions? Okay, moving on.
Yeah, a quick question. I know we discussed in committee regarding having the ditches that are dug in over there. Maybe Mr. Bowery will kindly ask if they can do that? Are we going to do that? Or kind of ask if they can get it out and make them proper? Is that something that we plan on doing or what?
I, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a very large undertaking. We need to really, we really have to have some discussions as to exactly what, what you want to do. Want to just group out everything and put it back the way it was, the ditches? There's gonna be some people that are gonna be very opposed to that and, you know. The other, the other thing, very expensive, you can curb the gutter. I think, I think that we really need to take a hard look at that and give the, give the people on those streets a lot of advanced notice before that happens.
And John, I would rather talk with them ahead of the decision.
Kindly ask before making a sort of, if we know it's a problem, if it's a problem, I mean, we can talk about it later. Kindly ask the rest of the day, if we know this, we please.
Yeah, that, we got to assume here that if we clean all that up and fix the ditches, then water still has to go someplace.
Well, we're all carrying it. It wouldn't come down, but all the street. Well, is there storm sewers?
Yeah, there's some. Well, storm sewers are problems.
I don't think that's the issue there, but again, that's probably a discussion for the.
Storm sewers, the storm sewers handle it for, you know, like the majority of the time. You know, if you get a 500-year rain, it doesn't, but what we hear mostly is people complaining about water coming through the, through the yards that.
Does this address that?
No, it doesn't address that. It doesn't, you know. The, the problems over on Vermont, where they have water coming down from Gaylord. And between Vermont and Lindsay, where the builders' wells have been filled in. And that, it doesn't, no, it's not, you're not gonna address that unless you get the homeowners to do it or you get the homeowners to petition the city to give them, give the city an easement, to go up their land and do it. In the times that I know of different cities asking for easements to do something like that, the people are in the ground, looking for easements and, you know, it falls flat on its face.
John, I think the ditch should be corrected, and I think personally, but by the same token, I'm afraid if we fix the ditches, it doesn't fix the problem.
Well, it fixes a part of the problem. It helps, it helps preserve the road where, where they have. Part of the ditch is filled in and part of them not, and the water running down the road, it has a tendency to erode the edge of the road. And, you know, it corrects that kind of problem, but it's not, it's not gonna run off between the yards.
Service director said it'd be a smart thing to do, get all the water off the street that's plowing down the highway area and ensure causing havoc. It's not gonna solve the water problem, but it's something that we should look at. I know the service department is more than firm.
Okay, I guess what is the service, does the service department do anything in that regard?
My understanding from our meeting is not really at this point because people have had both their ditches very protected of that and it would be, you know, we need to talk to them. I agree that we need to talk to the people. You know, my suggestion would be, let me do this. The service department's too busy to, like, make a fire out of the litter of every house, have a little meeting, explain a little, and get their head to know what all the problems are. Since we're not doing an actual stormwater study, that would be a good place to start, to bring them in to be part of the solution. Advise them about the swells and such, but ultimately, I have never heard anybody say that the storm sewers themselves are overflowing in capacity. It's been a problem with the water getting to the storm sewers. And I understand about the water in the backyard that's coming down, but the problem with the ditches in Vermont and Lindsay primarily. Mr. Bowery says it comes down to, and a heavier rain, it gets to someplace where the pipes clog, it's been enclosed, it unfolds out the street, it busts out those streets to Hywood, and then, or it's too much water at that point in time to get into the catch basins in Hywood that it overflows to curb the driveways and ends up in the basements or those outdoor driveways apparently. It's not gonna cure the backyard problem, but it would keep the water in the storm sewer system instead of coming out the street to get to the storm sewer system. So, he agrees it needs to be done, but he also knows, and so I can tell you, I live on a street with open ditches and when they came through and redished them years ago, a whole lot of people complained.
Are you unsure? Are you digging into here?
Well, in the right way. They had, oh, I suspect they mowed it. Now, it's red, yes, so they can't mow it so easy.
Yes, I was given the impression that we had manholes that were either re-tensioned or removed or blown off because of excess water in the sewer and it.
Mr. Wosley talked about he lifted a manhole off one time, but that's not, not where any stormwater manholes being blown off. I've not ever heard that.
The, the only, not the stormwater.
Right, yes.
Last, last year, I, I found a stormwater manhole, and I'm not even sure if it's stormwater. I have to go back and check. Might have been a sanitary. The manhole was actually removed and, yeah. I have no idea who removed it, but we got it back on there, so. The sanitaries used to, they used to blow off, they blow those. Now the water just shoots up.
Well, I guess in my opinion, if A, if it's in the road, that's going to cost taxpayer money on the road. B, if it is getting to the houses, it needs to resolve sooner or later. That's something that's not called for. I would be upset if I had a house because I wanted to ditch, don't ditch or whatever, ditch properly, that might basically keep them flooding. I would be very upset with the person, so that's good when you look at it.
Well, is the water that comes from the backyards, down from the backyards, is that coming from other ditches? The ditches on Gaylord or is that coming just from?
I don't think we know.
I believe that's, it's cutting off of other properties. It's not coming. Streets are handling, the ditches in the streets, if they don't handle, when they, some of them, people have filled in. It runs over where it's been filled in and on in the road. It's, I don't know, people have their downspouts just pointed out in their backyards, which is the way the E team wants us to go now. And that's, you know, it's just, it's just rainwater off the houses and that running, running to the lowest point. It's not, I don't believe it's cutting off the roads going into people's properties. It's not the ditches overflowing.
And this question is, we use the law record, but we have to give permission to walk into the backyards if people were doing that? And I don't expect any answers tonight, don't I?
Well, I mean, if you're just going in and trying to look, the notion is that going on people's backyards and trying to offer some help for a problem.
And that's what we're trying, I mean.
I would let people know that you're going to do that, but they object, like a show.
Okay.
And then we can deal with those people that object.
So we could, I mean, I think that's the first thing. We gotta figure out why is all that water getting in the backyard? If it is people have their back downspouts just coming out the backyard and they can say, eh, that's how it's flooding, you know, maybe we can do something different, let's find out where it's coming from. Because I don't think even in the, I mean, 500, the May 12 rain, you got problems no matter what, but other than that, some of those other rains, if we're getting a substantial amount, I don't think it's necessarily just the water in the backyards flowing that much. I, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but if we will find out, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, I have a really realistic finger in the air that it is a real solution.
Well, my thing is, we can talk about this a couple of years.
It's been about, what, four years?
Right, but we need to do more to talk.
I mean, what, Mr. Morrison, what legal obligations does the city have on what can we do? Can we go after stove or all the water they send to us or?
You can pray about it.
Yeah, talk to God. So, maybe can't be bad. Can homeowners do, can they sue their neighbors for it?
Depends on what the neighbor's doing.
Just kidding, because I feel like we're, we're in a helpless situation. I've got these people out here.
You are. When you build your home downstream and the Lord decides to fill a valley with water, you're in trouble. There's no government that's gonna fix it.
I mean.
But what happens is you end up having a heavy, heavy storm. Some might say a hundred-year, some may say a 500-year. Seems like we've had four or five 100-year storms in a three-year period. Look, the municipality, the city, the building, the state, the county, they cannot control Mother Nature. If they're, if they're doing them, in my opinion, statewide, they're more cognizant now than we're better than. We now require builders that are putting in non-hurrible surfaces, asphalt or concrete, to provide for retention bases. You do the best you can, but there's no way that you're going to outsmart Mother Nature. It's just not gonna happen. It's just not gonna happen. People love to live on the water until the water is inside their house and they don't like the river. I don't know what to tell you.
Smoke makes somebody live on the water.
But the fact of the matter is, you know, once upon a time, oceanfront property was pre-dellagram. Now people can't even get it insured. You can sue the state or federal government for that. Unless you live in Silver Lake and they allow it to go up, they go up a piece of land and told at the time, you can't develop the land, it'll flood. Twenty years later, the homeowner sues the village because someone allowed them to develop, they shouldn't have. It's silly.
Mr. Morrison, what if they have a situation where an developer put it in a logic, say, 40 years ago, they gave them proper grade, where things weren't, you know, proper grade, and now it's come to a head? Is that something, I mean, obviously if the company's still in business, the president offered the order at that level, huh?
I would say no. The person who said, who said they put it in property drainage was probably according to code at the time they put it in. Can't retrospectively say, hey, by the way, you didn't know that 40 years later, you would learn it because now 25% more properties cover the asphalt or concrete that your drainage is, the normal works. You know, once upon a time, this was all farm land, didn't have drainage problem, worked fine, went off the land and in the river. So it's a man-made problem. I, I've, you know, I've been a law director since 2004, and this conversation or some version of this conversation, many of you know, some of you are the others, has been going on for that 11 years. There, it not only goes on in Monroe Falls, it goes on in Stowe, it goes on in Townish, it goes on in Silver Lake, and it goes on at the county level and the state level, and they're a watershed district, and nobody's yet figured out how to solve the problem. What they do is they redirect the water somewhere else and create a new problem. I, I think it's admirable that the city looks at locations where, and we've done that. Not me, I'm a law director, but the city has looked at areas where can we provide some relief, whether it's putting in a larger hole or widening a ditch or opening up a ditch or the one that we redid the watering, put brick wrap up on the banks so it didn't wash away. I mean, the city, I think, has attempted, within the constraints of its budget, to try and help in some ways. They took the dam out. Nobody won't river flood anymore. Now, I don't know what's going on downriver. That's their problem, right? I don't know, but I'm just saying that, you know, you can only do so much. You can only do so much. Mother Nature drops leaves and branches and trees in the waterways. Natural animals drink, you know, build dams in waterways. All this has to be vigilant, just like protecting ourselves against a terrorist bomb. We'll have to be vigilant. Someday it's gonna happen, whether we're vigilant or not. Someday we're gonna get a flood, whether we're vigilant or not. I don't know what else to tell you. You don't have the money to fix the problem. It isn't even the only money in the world. I don't know what to fix it. Create huge rain barrels. I'm pragmatic on this issue, but I'm just telling you. If you have storm sewers that are clogged, clean them out. I'm listening to these closed ditches, and the first thing that popped in my mind was, let's hope you have a closed ditch, or is she getting water on the roadway? Why don't we have an inlet where there are closed ditches? Now, my mother lives out in Compton Township. They have ditches, except in front of her house, she didn't have a ditch. It's all on the close, but there are three outlets.
Cleanouts, yeah.
No, inlets. So the water doesn't lay on the road. It runs into the grass and down into the pipes. Now, I don't know what these, but do they have an outlet on top of them?
Some of them, some of them do.
It'd be an easy fix to put an outlet.
Some of them do not.
Well, the ones that don't, tell them to pull one in.
Then there's no cleanhouse, they get clogged, leaves.
Well, if, if there's, if there's an inlet, there's a cleanout.
Right.
I'll pull it off and clean them out. That'd be a, that'd be a way to get the water off of the street, which appears to be a problem.
There are, there are some that also, I think, there's some houses that do have, they do have.
A grate, a grate up on top. Put a box in there, connect the two lines, the tune of the lines to a box with a grate on it, put the grate at ground level and let it take the water into the underground, not engineered. Seems like a sensible thing to do, though.
Okay, thanks, Jack. I'm also trying to think, we're.
Now, we're Jack.
Yeah, we're Jack, law director, Jack Morrison, we have to tell us.
Okay, so let me tell you a couple of things. Number one, I went on the website and I'm pulling out some of the, our, the other early language that has been, goes with Business West carry forward. I started drafting that, and I'm gonna try and conform as best I can to our existing tax legislation. I'm hoping that I will have a first draft for you, the review for the next council meeting. That's number one. Number two, I've looked at our ordinances, and our ordinances unfortunately do require that any business that's gonna locate in this community go to the planning commission. I do not find any authority over the charter for that. That is something that City Council has bestowed upon the planning commission to be the gateway, if you will, to our new business coming in. There was a speculative rule against, and so I'm gonna be giving you a memo on that. And my recommendation is that that, that legislation be amended to remove the requirement that any new business, now maybe some that that should be true, particularly if it's a manufacturing business, but if you're selling sub sandwiches across the street, I don't know why you need to go to the planning commission. And that goes also into the issue of signage. Under the charter, the planning commission is not bestowed with any authority to evaluate signage. But City Council or the administration of commission too, over the years, has blessed the commission with authority over signage. That's something I'm gonna take a look at. I'm also looking at some other sections of the city ordinance to, to change. And it seems to me that signage, and I'm gonna blaspheme the planning commission, I guess, seems to be an assignment to something that could certainly be handled by your service director without oversight of the planning commission, in any respect, in any respect. But the planning commission is throwing me off, hanging out of the drive, I'm just telling you. I don't, I don't see why the planning commission needs to be involved in height, size, setback, side yard, front yard, color of signage. Your service director is fully capable of looking at that and making a determination on whether or not it is within the appropriate setback, the appropriate size, the appropriate configuration, whether it is an ingress or egress sign, or whether it is a sales sign or a window sign. And I just, when I looked at it, I found very little reason why, in fact, I found no reason why the planning commission would do that, except to lighten the burden on the service director's own official. That's the only reason that I can say. Because you're not talking about requiring any particular engineering expertise, any traffic control expertise, because the signage regulations pretty much lay out in some really specific language where a sign can be. Now, if someone wants to put a sign up, they have a drawing, and service director can look at it, look at the ordinance and say, that meets the ordinance. I don't know why that's going to the planning commission. That's my, that's my thoughts on that. And the other thing I'm doing is I'm finalizing a memorandum of understanding with the park, so the community park director, committee chairman, and we'll get that thing done on my dear birthday. That's all I have.
So, you know, the sign, so no one has to actually inform the city, but under proposal, inform the city of the sign, who's have to, or have to see signing against our law suit or?
No, it isn't. Let me clarify something. The amendment that is before you, this table.
Yes.
Has to do with changing.
Yes.
The facing on light.
Yes.
On an existing sign.
Yes.
Just like what I said, City of Monroe Falls, that podium, can't change the size of the podium, the direction of the podium, the height, the width, but you can change the lettering to say, "The City of Monroe Falls", without one of them knowing. And without even telling them.
I understand.
So next week, when we show up and says, "This City of Monroe Falls", someone will have changed the sign without any of us knowing it. That's what I am proposing in the language by putting that table in.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Sign, no, any sign.
It is any sign.
Well, any.
Existing.
Or a new sign.
No, not a new sign, no. Any existing sign.
Yeah, I was saying that, but I thought you were gonna change it.
Well, no, no, we're talking about the existing ordinance.
Yes.
I'm saying, I'm looking beyond that to say, why are we having new businesses come through the planning commission? If across the street there was an accounting firm, an apartment, one baby, an A A U, and a law firm goes in there, why do they need to come to the planning commission? What, what possible reason is there other than we're curious?
And just on that regard, Mr. Morrison, I don't, I understand what you're saying. I certainly, with that permitted uses, put that in. And your, and where your head would that, would that include conditional uses or not? Because I think there's several sections that talks about conditional permitted versus all this permitted, and I may be.
Talking about signage.
No, business, businesses.
Oh, no, it would just be permitted uses. Absolutely, it would just be permitted. Because they know, conditional uses means we're gonna allow you to do it, or we're gonna establish.
And that would still show, and you're saying to the plan.
Yes, I'm talking, yes, I'm sorry. I'm talking permitted.
Okay, I just, because if we're doing all businesses, I would.
No, 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 I'm talking about a permitted, you know, if it's zoned for retail.
And I absolutely agree with you. I, I absolutely agree. I just wanna make sure not the conditional's are.
So that's just my thoughts on that. That's all I have.
At the last planning mission, we may have talked about getting some clarification on terms within our ordinances. Has anybody come back to you? Because there was one that was cited.
Someone gave me an email on what facing.
Right, and that was, but they.
That's the only one that I've seen.
And I've received nothing from any, and I had a question, and the mayor was gonna remind them.
Yeah, that's the only one I got, is what is facing?
Right, so I've not heard of any of this, to be more specifically asked.
That's all I have.
You have questions for Jack? Moving on, President of Council, next regular council meeting to be held Tuesday, July 7th, 2015 at 7:00 PM. Director of Finance, Krista?
Yes, I've seen in the Beacon Journal today that the city of Stowe is the first city to get on more in Summit County with the OhioCheckbook.com, so that was an interesting article, and as I promised, I would keep you up to date. And as I promised, I would keep you up to date on what other cities are doing and what's the latest with OhioCheckbook dot com. So I did call John today, I met him a couple of weeks ago, and we were kind of concerned about what the logistics be and how does that all, you know?